The Amherst School Board meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Announcements, we have our principals' reports. Does anybody have anything they want to ask or comment on the reports? Did you have anything?
No, no, thank you.
We do have a pretty short meeting agenda tonight, so not a lot that we're gonna go through. Porter, did you want to say anything about Junior National Honor Society?
That's right, yeah, yeah. Just for two, really, two slides. Just, you'd asked, you'd asked that we give us some definitive answers for it, and we have them for it.
Good, thank you.
It's all moving along, so if, thank you. All right, we can go right. As the public's aware, we have joined the, Amherst Middle School has joined the National Junior Honor Society, and so I presented a couple of slides here just to let everybody know some of the information. We've been talking about it for a while. The second slide, yeah, thanks, Jerry. All right. I apologize, the bottom of the zone is clear. But anyway, just to give people a little bit of information, the National Junior Honor Society was established by the N S S P, the National Association for Secondary School Principals, recognizes and promotes the academic achievement while also encouraging the ideals of service, leadership, character, and citizenship. Members are selected by a five-member faculty council appointed by the principal. That is deliberately kept confidential, so there were no factors involved there. Chapter advisors Maggie Kim and Tom Knapp are also appointed by me. They're non-voting members of the faculty council but are responsible for the overseeing and promoting the chapter activities. That'll be coming along. Students must be in the seventh or eighth grade and must have attended the Amherst Middle School for at least one full trimester to be considered for selection. That means all Mont Vernon students are eligible as well, and anybody who moves in at the beginning of the year is also eligible. The first of the five criteria for membership is scholastic achievement. Students must have an overall grade point of 3.7. That is consistent with what we were using in the past, but now this adds a couple more features to it, and that's on the next slide. And this is the last slide for you. Our timeline, in early January, which is right now, we're working on it following the end of the first trimester, which just closed before the holidays. Seventh, eighth grade students interested and are eligible scholastically will be asked to provide additional information, especially about accomplishments in the area of service and leadership. And I will pass out to you, I brought copies of what they will actually see. Jim, could you pass those down?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Students who are scholastically eligible.
3.7 or higher.
Do they know that, or will they be contacted?
They will be contacted. Right now, great question. They will all be informed. Anne Daniel has been busy with the envelopes and everything, so, you know, there's quite a few this year, because, don't forget, this year will be seventh and eighth grade, because that was agreed upon, and I think it's the right thing to do. Next year, eighth graders will be eligible, but most of them would apply in the seventh, and only those who have brought their grade point average up higher and who now decide to do the service and the activities would be considered. So it won't be as large a group for the first year. For some dates that we have, again, the faculty are invited to give any input about service, leadership, character, and citizenship, but one of the things I want to stress to the public is that no staff member would come in and be able to say Porter Dodge is not up to this caliber. This is simply telling us, yes, they agree, that they, no one, if they have a 3.7 grade point average and they apply, they, and again, I used to take the word "application," but when they submit the information, they would ask to be considered. When that is done, there's no blackballing of anybody. I want to make sure that's very clear. Some people thought in the past years ago, in fact, when I was in school, that a teacher, we always believed a teacher could just say, "No, I don't want you in the National Honor Society." That's not the case. We, January 20th, which is coming up, student information forms and faculty input are due, so we'll be getting those out to everybody in the next couple of days. The week of February 8th, candidates who receive a majority of the vote of faculty council are invited to be inducted into the chapter. Again, majority of those, five, so it isn't unanimous. Majority of five. If a child does the application, has shown significant work in the things they've done, there's no reason why they should not be in. Monday, the 15th, we'll have our first evening induction ceremony. The school board is invited, we'll certainly get all the information out to everyone, and then the members will be expected to continue to meet the level of excellence in scholarship, service, leadership, character, and citizenship that led to this election, and then they will be expected to actively be involved in planning and carrying out a chapter service project. Some of the ideas we've been toying around is getting our recycling up again, you know, touching up, remember some of the school boards, some of you were involved with the painting and decorating of the place, which was hugely successful, things like that. And that's really it. I just wanted the public to know, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this idea. Every child, again, who is eligible with a 3.7 will be given this information that you're receiving right there, and then they can take the time with their parents to decide whether it's for them or not.
Can you keep us posted on the community service project that?
Absolutely. Once we find out, we'll be very excited, yes.
Yeah.
That's great. Are you excited?
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
A little bit of excitement, you know, because we set the date and everything, and then we contacted the company, and the company said, "Well, you know, you have to go through," they don't take purchase orders, nobody's taking purchase orders anymore. So all of a sudden today is, "Oh, my goodness, wait a minute, we have this in a month, we've got five, six weeks," and they said, "Oh, well," you know, so, including the check guy to promote credit card, you know, "But we'll get that taken care of, because we are going to provide them with pins and cards that will say it." And just nothing, just that says to a National Society and a card with their name on it and stuff. It's exciting. We really are. And Maggie and Tom are really going at this gung-ho, and Anne Daniel, who was helping them, crazy. She even came in during vacation week, I caught her in there one day, "What are you doing?" She was getting the stuff ready for us, so that's Anne, you know.
I think that, I would expect that the fifth and sixth graders will see what's happening, and this could provide motivation for them to, you know, to do well, because they'll be excited about, you know, seeing the older kids achieve this, so.
I agree. And, you know, once they see this type of thing, I'm just so happy, I have to say it publicly, I'm just happy that we have moved to this versus the old days and the problems just around plaques and whether people thought they were valuable or not. This is something they earn.
Yeah.
They earn it with not just grades, they earn it with character.
I love that.
Yep.
I love that.
It's great.
I'm so excited. I'm so happy for everybody that's gonna participate in this, and I'm so appreciative for the faculty that have been involved in this, and for your leadership on this, and it really just is, I think it's really a feather in the cap for the middle school. I think it's awesome.
Appreciate it.
Really excited.
Porter and I have talked about, as far as students is concerned, is that there are some, number of board, boards in the state of New Hampshire that now have, even on a middle school, having a student representative come and sit with the board, not a non-voting member. Certainly many high schools do it, but a lot of the junior highs and middle schools are doing it. I talked with Porter a little bit, we're gonna talk a little bit more. On a rotating basis, it wouldn't be the same student every time, but just having a, having a student here, getting used to the governance piece early on, so we'll probably bring something back to you next time, if that's okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Looking forward to that. And I agree with what you said, I think with Porter's leadership and all this, you see it in his face here, he's very proud of what's happening with that, and I'm proud of him for putting that forward and having it end up where it is, so thank you.
Thank you.
Carter?
Yes?
Your academic average of 3.7. Mathematically, what is 3.7? 3.68? 3.7?
Jean, I'm glad you asked that, because that's always the one.
At the high school level, wasn't the kids having a fight for it? We had parents coming in looking for that extra point. And if it's a bunch of, I mean, you, they'll go to the teachers.
Right. In this particular case, the good thing about it, yeah, that's a good question, Jean, we were talking about it just yesterday. We had, I believe, three students who were at six point, I mean, six point, they were at 3.689, that kind of thing, the crazy things that happened there, and then we had the decision, and what I did is, what's nice about it, National Honor Society said, "You can turn that over to your leadership," and they can decide whether they, because again, if you want to get to an average, is a 3.6892, is that a 3.7? And I would argue that it's awful close, and yes, it is. There is certainly those points. So they're gonna decide that, and then basically out of our hands, but it is a good question.
And I'm telling you, the kids, students can't, straight up.
Yeah, and colleges, my wife being in the nursing profession, if you have a 3 point, I mean, a 2.9999, and that's not a 3, you're out of the program.
Yeah.
But we're not a college yet, and I really believe, since there are so many other factors, that closeness is, I don't have a problem with it, I really don't. And so, but thank you, it's a great question. And I'm sure there will be some people, because there is an appeals process, as I mentioned you before, I didn't put up here, but there is an appeals process to anybody who thinks that their child may be eligible, maybe didn't get a letter. You know, we're sending letters out this week, and somebody calls up and says, "Can you check?" There's a chance for error, there always is, and we'll be glad to check that, because we want every kid that's getting part of this. Thank you, Jean, good question.
Okay. Okay. We do not have committee reports today. Anybody from the public, want to address the board? Okay. I need a motion for the consent agenda, but I think, can I?
You can ask.
Can somebody pull the minutes?
I'll pull them.
Okay. So then I would need a motion for the consent agenda items B, C, and D.
So I make a motion for the consent agenda items B, C, and D.
Okay, second?
Second.
Pull those in favor. Okay. There's just a couple of errors in the minutes that we're just gonna fix, and then we'll include them in the next month's agenda.
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I have this part, too.
Oh, we have to add? Yeah. Okay, all right. Presentations, Slide 15, second quarter report. Are you doing that, or no?
Yeah, did she finish the consent?
I do. Oh, I'm sorry.
So the issues with the names?
Yeah, but just like spelling and just nothing. Yeah, just the name, and just little, nothing like.
I think substantive, just.
Yeah.
Sometimes we do that, and we want, Marianna will be in touch with you, we'll take a look at some of the things, we'll just bring it back next week.
As opposed to going through each line?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But no, you know. Okay. Here. Sorry.
Is that okay?
I think it's the wrong one.
Actually, Betty, we need to just hold off for a second. I think we made a mistake.
Yeah, I think that we need to.
That was supposed, that shouldn't have been in there. How do we?
I would say we'd make a motion to remove letter C from the voted consent agenda.
She uploaded.
We need to remove letter C, because we forgot that was in there.
Okay, so just B and D?
Yeah.
So do I make a new?
Make a motion to remove letter C from the consent agenda.
Okay, so I make, I make a motion to remove letter C from the consent agenda.
Right. Okay, I'll take it. All those in favor? Okay, sorry about that, that was an oversight with our.
Thank you.
That was totally an oversight. Yep, good catch. We didn't mean to do that. Okay. Now we're on.
Okay.
This is shortcut to the agenda package, but this one isn't quite the.
I'm not sure if the updated one, I have the.
Okay.
Well, Betty, tell me something you would have changed in it, and I'll check.
Yes. It's not the updated one.
Okay.
So.
Get out the sharepoint.
Yeah, well, maybe you can get on the.
How do we know if we have the, I think I have the updated one there. That won't help, because we can't load onto that. I can't email it.
Can you email it?
All you can do is, yes, that's true. Do you want to?
It doesn't have, this is, um.
What?
Well, I'm gonna, I'll go through this, but it's not the updated one. I'll have to go through it out of my, out of my. So draft three, draft two to draft three, we had, so we had some. Yeah, I think we should go on to.
We do something else we can do?
Gosh, that's kind of like you were it.
We can do policy.
Yeah, let me.
No.
Like all of our budget changes, go through those, I can get those.
We can tell people we're not gonna do policy.
No, any good jokes?
Yeah. Okay, so.
Come on, go to microphone.
I'll just talk to them.
Okay.
Wait.
So the budget changes that we had were the draft two to draft three, where's the salary, salaries for administrators, there was a 1% pool put in for administrator increases. The, in replacement equipment, we also added $5,000 for a carpet extractor, that was something that had been left out of the budget, and under new equipment, a wheelchair lift, which it had been actually slated to be in the budget. We talked about it with the Ways and Means Committee, and it was supposed to be in there, but, and that just didn't happen, so it's in there now. Coordinator of parent volunteers, so we took $2,400 out of the budget, because the PTA is going to take over that responsibility for coordinating the volunteers. And then on the recommendation of the, of the Ways and Means Committee, we did take another look in the, in the food service budget at the small wares, because the spending had been a little bit erratic, so we looked into it deeper to find out what we needed. And we actually do, do have, need the amounts that are in there this year, because we didn't purchase a lot last year. However, we did look and felt we could be up to speed, and there were a couple of hundred dollars, 1,100 dollars, or, I'm sorry, $550 we could take out of the budget this year. So those are the budget changes we made, was an increase additions in the budget, $16,503, and reductions of $2,950. So it brought our budget up to $24,597,380.
Million.
That.
Yeah, million, 24 million.
Twenty-four million.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, whoops.
A few zeros.
It says a notch different.
Extra zeros. All right, thank you. Yeah, I'll try and find it. It's before that, yeah. So then that brings us to our budget summary. Our budget summary, which shows us as a 0.56% decrease in our budget. And now I'm.
I have the budget change with 342.
Okay, keep. Here, I'll. Yes, so that's where we show our budget summary, which shows a 0.56. Then, this is our revenue sheet, which gives us an analysis of what we have for expenditures. And, I don't know, I'm gonna go backwards on this to the, hopefully, we'll have the. So our revenue sheet, well, we use our, our second quarter report on, for forecast, as part of our revenue sheet, so at December 31st, we are looking, our revenues will be very close to what we projected, we believe, so $3,600 over. And then our expenditures, we're looking at salary and benefit variances that we have due to personnel changes, and a lot of that is because we did have, I'm just taking one of these. And a lot of the change is due to variances because of retirements that we had unexpectedly. So we did have some savings in personnel. We also have had additional special education services required and transportation, so, but on, on the other side of it, we did have some savings in personnel as well, in special education. So that's where we stand, is that 604,500 savings in our, in our forecast. So to go back down to the revenue, because that's 604,000 plus the 3,600 is brought into, into our unreserved fund balance. If you'll see, it's the fourth line down, the 608,100. So we're looking at that as our unreserved fund balance at that time, at year-end, right now, in our projection. So just to bring you down how the, how it looks for our revenues, we had, and I showed you this last month as well, just to show you in the past, so in FY14, our tax rate, and then 1205 in FY15, which we returned taxes on $300,000, $300,000 home of 3,630, or 330,000, and FY16 of 990, return of taxes on a $330,000 home, which is a median home in Amherst. So how does our revenue look FY16 versus FY17? So our expenditure budget is a reduction, and it will, and it will bring our taxes down by nine cents, because we have reduced our budget. The unreserved fund balance, because we had a higher unreserved fund balance last time, last year, well, actually, it's this current year versus next year, so that, so unfortunately, then we'll have to pay more, 24 cents up on the, on the tax rate. And then these other items, tuition, we had, we received from Mont Vernon, we'll be receiving less, we have fewer students, and that'll bring our tax rate up, because we receive less. Our federal grants will be a little more, so that'll bring our tax rate down again at one, and so on, on our, on our other revenues, we are receiving less of these other revenues, therefore it'll bring our tax rate up. In the end, even though our budget is going down, we will have a total tax impact of an increase of 26 cents. And then, this is a look at your default budget. So for FY17, we're looking at a default budget, we use our current budget, or our current voted budget, which is a default budget, and then we either add or, or reduce, depending on the, on the contractual obligations that we have and other obligations, and if we're not going to incur contractual obligations, then we reduce those lines. So in areas where we would not be hiring a teacher, for example, then we would reduce that amount. So it brings us down to 24,172,489 for our default, which brings us to our meeting warrant. So we take a look at that, the difference between 24,500, so it's, it's a little over $400,000, is the difference, 24,597,380 to 24,172,489, if it's a default. So that gives the voters the opportunity to vote yes or no in an SB2 situation, giving them the proposed budget or a default budget. Those numbers at the bottom haven't been changed. I think they, so that should be 26 cents on that, 26 cents if we pass that, and it should, instead of being eight cents, it should be a decrease of one cent. So that, I don't think that one got updated in this version of the sharepoint. And we were holding an article here for the negotiations. We currently haven't been able to come to an agreement with the AEA, so it's not as likely that we will be actually having an article here for the AEA agreement. And then the final article, again, is the $50,000 from a year-end undesignated fund balance for the education, educating students with disabilities. We established that in March 2014, and we have put $100,000 in there, our target is to put $200,000, and that is in case of students that are unanticipated, have not been budgeted for, and they can be, it can be a costly situation if we suddenly have special ed needs that we did not expect, so we want to protect our school district from that. We're putting this aside, and the Expendable Trust will do that for us. And I believe that's that.
Is that three cents per thousand, correct? That's updated?
Yes, it is, yeah. Yeah, the only one that needed changing was the one in the article up above. And so there were very few changes to that, and I think you were basically aware of what they were.
Okay. Do you guys make a comment now, or no?
We haven't had a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
So next Tuesday, we're gonna discuss and vote for.
Got it, okay.
We'll discuss.
Okay, and you didn't have any questions or anything?
No. Yeah, their meetings are very efficiently organized, right before the moment they need to. Just in time.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions on any of the changes that have been made? What building was the, the equipment changes in?
I believe it was Wilkins. Let me check.
I thought it was Wilkins.
Right?
Where's the wheelchair lift?
That will go at Wilkins also.
Where?
It will go, it's stored, I believe, behind the stage, it's going to be, so we can get people onto the stage.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be, it's for the stage, but it won't, it's not a piece of equipment that is stationary in place, we move it in and out. We've bought the same thing in Mont Vernon, actually. Works very well.
Okay. What's great about the volunteer coordinators?
Yes.
Yeah, that's nice. $1,600, it's awesome.
Okay. Okay, so just, I feel like I need to go back through. So we had a little confusion with our consent agenda. We pulled the minutes, because there are just a few, kind of, not grammatical, but spelling errors and stuff that we wanted to clean up that we hadn't done yet, so we'll put the minutes on the next agenda. So we did vote to approve the Unanticipated Student Activity Fund and the Budget Transfers. We are not voting on any retirement requests tonight, we'll do that at our next meeting. So that was the confusion, that we forgot to pull that and hold it for our next meeting. So that's where we're at with that. We're going to also table a review of policies that we have coming up for our next meeting. We'll be meeting January 13th, so we'll review those policies, and I think these are our first. So we. first look.
After the public hearing, we're going to...
Yeah.
Just following the public hearing or before?
Yep. Yes.
What time are we?
We're second.
We're second, we're seven o'clock.
So that is a good reminder that our public hearing is next Wednesday. South Hegan will be doing their public hearing at 6 o'clock in the South Hegan Theater, and Amherst School Board will be doing theirs at 7.
Right. And then we'll hold a short meeting just after to address those two items. It's a first look at those policies.
It's the first look at the policies, yeah.
So if everybody could just make sure that they review the policies for the meeting, if you haven't already, just so we can have some...
Yeah, it's primarily...
...discussion, it's pretty, I don't know, I'm not going to say.
There's not a lot of changes to them, it was mostly going back to having consistency between the three districts, and there's a few minor things that had to be adjusted, because there were some differences between the districts, but there's no real significant changes to them, so. But certainly read them, and then we'll have our first reading at the next meeting.
Yep. Any questions you have can bring at that point? Okay. Okay. So this could be a record. A great way to start the new year.
Frank comes in and we're going to...
I know, we're leaving. Really sorry. Okay, so we do, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, oh, go ahead.
Any second? All those in favor? We are adjourned. See you the 13th.